Executive session meeting minutes from November fourth, not for release at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the November fourth, twenty twenty four executive session meeting minutes, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have also a meeting minutes in your packet. We've been very busy in November, November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Those have been available to you in your packet?
And move to approve the November thirteenth, two thousand twenty four meeting minutes?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the November fourth executive session meeting minutes.
No, uh, this is just for the open session.
I'm sorry, the November thirteenth, uh, general meeting minutes, uh, they, those would be for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion, we, uh, have a favorable vote. We'll move on to town reports and moving on to the, uh, town administrator report.
That does not include the minutes from the executive session that night, which we'll do another time.
I have used that one.
Yeah, no, no worries on that.
You know, you did a good job. You got a lot done.
That was a lot of them.
That's a lot. So.
Lots of meetings.
Timothy, yeah?
She doesn't have her own workstation yet until we get downstairs, but she's learning and this is a lot of work that Sandy has, has done, so.
Okay, so we have town meeting report, uh, town administrator report, I'm sorry. I was hitting with town meeting. Don't tell me about that three hundred thousand. I don't know if I can deal with that, but go ahead.
All right, so first thing we'll start out with is I had reached out to, for three quotes to clean our, in our whole entire Henrywood's building, starting with the third floor, because I want to start getting that, um, onto, uh, getting hit up. They have like public hearings and meetings that we discussed at the annual town meeting and then clear out all these other floors and the basement downstairs.
Well, I think we ought to note also that the removal of this accumulated refuse was something that was required by, uh, the building inspector.
It was, it was, and.
I mean, it's not like something we just thought up. Wouldn't it be nice to do? It, it is.
Well, it needed to be done. I think it's been there for a while, so.
It needs to be done, yeah, for sure.
Um, but anyways, so we showed to three people. One did not respond back to me. I have one estimate of four thousand two hundred fifty five dollars and I have one estimate of two thousand nine hundred dollars.
How much?
Two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Wow, who's that?
From Warm Town Services, so that is the one that I would request that we approve to go forth with.
Wow, that's a decent price.
That's an excellent price to give us.
Now, do we know these people? Do you have any Brett references on them?
Um, he's from the area, so I try to always stick with the area, so, um.
Oh, he is, okay. Okay, so that's good. All right, so, um, that's coming out of ARPA?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not going to impact our budget in any way. Uh, nice going, Tammy. That's, uh, going to be a big, big thing for us to get all of this junk thing out.
I'll be glad to get all the junk out.
We need a motion and approval for that, uh, accepting of that bid?
I move to approve the bid from Warm Town Services for two thousand nine hundred dollars for the removal of, what's the term, refuse?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the, um, uh, shall we say, the bid from, uh, what's the name of the company again?
Warm Town Services.
Warm Town, like warm, like warm?
Warm, W O R M, yes, W O R M.
Okay.
Warm?
Warm.
W O R M.
Warm.
Okay, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion that has been approved. Um, anything else?
Yeah, just a few things I just wanted to put out there. Uh, the senior center is having their twentieth anniversary tomorrow. It's nine AM to eleven AM, so anyone out there that can join us, that would be great. We'd love to have you there. Uh, they can have refreshments, some of the photos of the times in the past, and they're really looking forward to seeing
It's nine AM?
as many people as they can, so if anyone.
Nine AM?
Nine AM. We would love to see all you there.
Teddy Joe called me and asked me if I'd attend. I said I would, but I'm of course.
I would love everyone if we, I know if you can, it's fine, but it'd be nice to see people there. Um, the floor of the senior center is actually already finished and completed, so she's working on that.
Okay.
Uh, so hopefully soon we'll be seeing. I know she's meeting with someone for the nail services and.
Oh, excellent.
Little dental, so that's going to be coming soon. Um, I will say a painting will be done tomorrow in the new town administrator's office down here and the carpet will be going in on Friday.
Oh, excellent.
So, that's a good thing. And then I just want to remind everyone that the dam, the old, uh, Barry Reservoir Dam is going to be this Wednesday, November twentieth, at six PM, and the, uh, subboards are meeting.
Uh, do we need any, um, pers- you know, we, we have video and stuff that they would use?
I would assume we, I don't know how to hook it up. It's not very good IT.
If, if they have a laptop with an HDMI port, we can plug it in.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if they have something else, we'll do our best.
Okay.
I printed out, if they have nap and all of those things, I do go to that.
Okay, well, hopefully they'll be able to use that and it'll be useful to the public who plan to attend. All set?
That's, yeah.
Okay, all set. Um, John?
Um, not too much. Um, you know, we talked a little bit about doing open space and adding trails to that. I didn't get that together yet, so we did pull that off, but still excited that we'll have, um, our first appointment, I presume, um, depending, you know, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but for the open space committee as it stands now. Um, and then also, um, just in a little bit of preparing before this meeting, uh, Tom George is actually here. He, uh, sent an email. Well, we have some, some things that we can work on, um, approving for snow removal, so we've added that to the agenda for Wednesday night after the, the dam meeting. So we were able to get that on with some time, so, um, if there's anything you want to say on that, we can, we can discuss it some, yeah.
We could, we could do that. Uh, could you make a five thirty meeting and we can maybe take care of Tom's stuff before the dam?
I, I don't think I can.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know if maybe we could take care of it earlier, because it's hard to know how long the dam meeting will go. It, that doesn't sound quite right.
Yeah.
How long the dam meeting will go, but anyway, um, okay, thanks.
Then we're, we're past twenty-four hours ahead of that anyway.
Well, you can change the agenda, but anyway, so, any, anything else, um, from yours, John?
Uh, that's, I think that's everything we have. We've continued to work on, uh, on, uh, I think there's a new grant, uh, or I don't know if you, we covered this last time or not, but the, um, green spaces community grant.
Yeah, I agree. I actually finally got it submitted after I had to fill out twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, so I had literally hit the deadline by like a day, so we ended up getting that in and
Yep.
crossing my fingers we hopefully get that one. That will be nice, because that will help us with heating pumps in the cooling system within this building, so.
Um, just a few notes, um, and Tom, I'm glad you're here. You can add something to my just very general review. Uh, we have had, um, lots of meetings down at the DPW department, um, particularly lately on water issues. I know that there's been some concerns relative to the public's, um, tasting of some chlorine in water and that is not, that's relatively unusual in the town of Barry, but it is not unusual when one is maintaining public water supplies similar to ours. I know that we have a public, a private company working with us to, um, do the testing and the appropriate things that we need to do. So, uh, I think that's pretty much that, that taste and chlorination is, is, is behind us now. Am I correct on that, Tom?
D E P's mandated that we continue chlorinating at this time, uh, just due to our sampling and whatnot, they've mandated that we continue to, to chlorinate. The residuals we're getting are, um, I did a couple of samples up on the high plains area
Mm-hmm.
and there were, uh, a residual of zero point zero.
When you say, you say residuals and you say zero point zero, what are you testing for and what's the zero point zero?
We're testing for the residual of chlorine in the, in the system.
Okay.
Um, it's zero, where you want to be is like a point two milligrams per liter.
Okay.
That's kind of the standard. Uh, where I was testing, I was only, I was getting zeros.
Okay.
But then you still got a little bit of that taste, a little bit of that smell. Uh, chlorine, obviously it is a chemical, it's highly oars, uh, it has a strong taste to it.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it's there, it's, it's not harmful, it's within normal parameters, um, and as we continue our sampling and whatnot, uh, we'll work with D E P to see if we can make it go.
Okay.
Uh, my question, why isn't the water commission meeting, you know, recorded or, you know, put up so people can watch?
That's up to the commission.
Well, I mean, shouldn't it be?
I.
Well, I, no, I'm just saying, considering, considering with your own public water supply?
Well, I think, I think you're right, Mark, and I think that we can certainly ask that that be, happen at, at the next meeting. And I don't, I don't, I, I've never heard them say they wouldn't do it. Um, now, I may have missed something. I have, uh, I have, at least since my tenure here, attended almost every single water commission meeting, um, and I don't think any of them were ever, okay, um, shown to the public. Okay, I don't think we had, because we've just, we've just done the general.
But we have a, um, what was the name of the company, the Blue Heron?
Yeah.
Great Blue Heron.
Great Blue Heron.
Yes.
So, um, professionals in the water industry?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the concerns that they have, if, and they said in open meeting.
Yeah.
Um, shouldn't that be, you know, the public should know this stuff, in, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, at the end, when they walked out, I guess, I guess it's not that serious, because we were reassured that it really wasn't that big a deal by Mr. Higgins.
Um, I'm not going to comment on how other board members have.
It was open meeting.
I understand that.
Okay.
I can't, I can't go into, you know, what their thoughts are and how they feel or, or anything else.
Right.
Um, there's, you know, certain things that the D E P has requested that be done, and it's a matter of confirming whether they have been submitted or they have been submitted. You know, just myself alone, I've submitted stuff, you know, with regards to the sewer system, and it got overlooked.
You know, I guess I'm, I'm asking you as your opinion. I understand you're on the board, and maybe I shouldn't be directing it towards you, but you were at that meeting, so I figured, you know, you know. And I apologize if I'm out of line, but I do believe it should be put on so everybody could see it, see what the problems are, move forward, because it could affect them in the future.
I think.
As far as rates, whatever.
Yep, I don't think that's a, a improper or inappropriate, uh, recommendation, actually, and I think I would certainly support that from at least my position on the board. And if we wanted to, we could take a board on that and encourage them strongly and demand that that be made a public meeting, um, and that we, you know, provide a, you know, uh, uh, video and as we do from, for the rest of the meeting, because the rest of the public meeting is, is, you know, said, we have video and audio, and we should probably do that for the water commission. I would say that, and, um, there's no question that we have issues of concern in the water system. Um, we need to do some upgrading. We know that, and, um, that's not going to be inexpensive. And we're always concerned about what if a wa- well fails? What do we do then? Do we have potentially a backup system? And right now, we have a well that's been discontinued in operation because of high iron content and, uh, Blue Heron has indicated that they could have further discussions with us as to how we might remediate that well and, or at least do, you know, do some investigation to see if it would be appropriate to put a private and small water treatment facility on that well and thus make that a potable source for the town. Again, these are, are, are big issues of concern. Uh, one of our probably most critical issues of concern is our ability to hire appropriately licensed persons to manage the water system. Uh, we understand that the local community, that we have got a private company in there ma- managing the situation at this time, but they indicate that their workload is such that they will be unable, potentially by early January, unable to continue to support our needs. So, that's what I lose sleep about, I, is, is having, you know, appropriate personnel to do the testing that's required. Uh, we've not been really successful, not, we're not alone, from what they tell us, that it's very difficult to find persons with the, um, licensing that is required by D E P to manage the wells. So, at any rate, we continue to do that search and we, I think we do have some water people or a person or two that we're going to be interviewing?
Um, I think, I think at this time, we've exhausted all of our, our water personnel.
So, so an effort to repost and advertise?
I have refreshed it.
Do we, um, don't we have one or two superintendents that are applying that have all the licenses?
I don't believe so.
I'm in the understanding there's one applicant that does.
He ended up saying he wasn't interested.
What's that?
He, who you're talking about, I don't want to say the name, but he has decided he's not interested in the position.
Okay, okay.
With Drew?
He would, yeah, I guess he's not interested in the position, that's what I was told.
I know that there's some, been some talk that there's other people that we think might be in the pipeline. I know Mr. Higgins mentioned that he might, uh, we might see an applicant who would be hel- helpful, but I don't think.
We did see another one that did come in.
Okay.
I'll actually send them out to you. I saw, um, John Chase today and I, he asked for it and I did give it to him.
Okay, so when do you think, uh, uh, Tom, we might be having interviews for the superintendent's position?
Uh, John Chase is setting that up now. I believe he's talking Thursday of this week.
Okay, okay, um, sounds good. And then what was I going to ask you? Another question do I have? No, I think we're good. I'm good. Uh, I don't have any other, uh, comments or, uh, and so forth to add to the, to the board's reports. Uh, Mark?
Um, no, that's actually kind of what I wanted to talk about, and also I just wanted to, um, let everybody know again, in case they, you know, follow Facebook and anything like that, that the, um, um, Sandy has uploaded the fraud audit on my town government, so I can stay for review for everyone.
And the website. And the website.
And the website.
And website.
Well, I really encourage people to take a look at the fraud audit. It's a, a requirement that we have finally, um, managed to fulfill based upon our previous audits. And so the work that you, Tammy, and you and, um, I think John, who kind of spearheaded that, has been really helpful. And we potentially may do some more work on clarifying some issues that they've raised. Uh, we'll wait and see what the, uh, cost might be to do that at this time. Okay, I think we're all sort, uh, correspondence to that? Anything? Do we have nothing? Okay. New business public hearing, six PM. We're a little late. I should have guessed you. I'm sorry to keep you waiting. Uh, we're doing the twenty twenty-five tax classification hearing, and so I would ask that we open the public meeting by vote. We would ask, uh, the selectmen to indicate by vote that we are ready to open the public meeting. Mr. Dixon?
I would move to open the public hearing for the FY twenty-five tax classification.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. Um, those in favor?
Dixon, yes.
Marshall, yes?
Reganis, yes.
Okay, I think we're ready to go, and, uh, we do have here an individual from the, um, assessors' office who will be walking us through the classification hearing. Uh, thank you so much for coming and, um, I guess we're ready.
All right. So, if, uh, you remember my spiel from last year, and a lot has changed, um, basically I'll just be going over the, the four big options here. The first one is whether or not to, uh, the select board has the power to choose whether or not to adopt either a uniform tax rate so that all residential, commercial, and industrial properties are taxed at the same rate or to shift a portion of that tax burden from the residential class onto the commercial and industrial sector. So historically, the select board has always voted, going back, uh, I don't know how many years exactly, but a long time, uh, to adopt a uniform rate and the Board of Assessors has recommended that we, uh, has recommended maintaining a uniform rate primarily because the, if you look in the handout that I included in your package, uh, the income this year for our taxes was about eighty-nine point eight two percent residential uh, with, with commercial being about three point seven percent, industrial being one point four percent, and personal property being five point two percent.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry, five point one percent. Um, so because there's such a small portion of our income that is commercial, industrial, and personal property, the Board of Assessors feels it would be a burden to shift any portion of the tax levy onto that. Um, does anyone have any questions about that?
Well, as you said, this is very typical to the last probably ten years, uh, as far as our exemptions and so forth, so I have no questions.
Okay. Here in none, I'll continue. Uh, there are three, uh, exemptions that can also be established and adopted, uh, for the town by the select board. Uh, the first of these is called the residential exemption, and what this is, I apologize, I made an error on the handout. Uh, it says it grants up to a twenty percent discount to owner occupied residential homes. That amount should actually be thirty-five percent. Uh, that was changed a couple of years ago by the state legislature. So what this would do is this would grant, uh, up to a thirty-five percent, uh, discount on the average value of owner occupied homes in the town. And this, if this were granted, this would shift the portion of taxes that would normally fall under that to, uh, vacation homes, rental homes, non-owner occupied residences.
Right.
Because Barry has such a small amount of non-owner occupied residences, the Board of Assessors has recommended not adopting the residential exemption.
And you'll need us to make that vote later on?
Uh, yes, so for, uh, part of, uh, final certification that will give us our tax rate, uh, from the Department of Revenue is the Board of Selectmen will need to formally vote and also fill out, I, I think I included a little sheet that shows, has a slot for all the votes and such. Uh, yes, so if there are no questions about that, uh, the next one is the open space discount. So this would be a discount of up to twenty-five percent of the taxable value. Uh, basically they'd only be taxed on seventy-five percent of the value of any par- any parcels in town classified as open space. The Board of Assessors has recommended not to adopt this, because in Barry, there is no land that is classified as open space and for those, uh, portions of land that would technically fall under the purview of open space, uh, the chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B program offers a much bigger discount.
Mm-hmm.
So, the, well, the Board of Assessors recommends not adopting the open space discount. And the last one is the small commercial exemption. Uh, this exemption would qualify businesses that have, uh, assessed value of, or commercial, uh, properties, I should say, that have an assessed value of one million dollars or less, uh, and that employ on average, uh, ten or less people during the year. Uh, the important thing to note here is that this exemption would be up for, up to ten percent of the value of the property, but the exemption goes to the property owner and not the business owner. So, the Board of Assessors has historically recommended, and they do it again this year, uh, not to adopt the small commercial exemption, uh, for that reason and also because this would shift any displaced tax value onto what little remaining commercial and industrial presence we have and would, the Board feels it would unfairly benefit that.
So, um, you have the minimum residential factor is just a one, obviously a split tax rate that you explain on the next page.
Mm-hmm, a, a factor of one would indicate a uniform tax rate, yeah.
Okay, so your recommendations for fair and equitable taxation is voted unanimously by the Board of Assessors is included herein. And the work of the, the, um, Board of Selectmen this evening is to look at their recommendations and to vote on our recommendation of the s- of the same issue. So, the first vote or the first issue that we need to make, uh, a formal, uh, you know, kind of decision about is the vote to adopt a single tax rate. Would, could I have a motion?
I would move to approve, uh, I would move to adopt a single tax rate.
Second.
We've got a motion made and seconded to adopt a single tax rate as recommended by the Barry Board of Assessors. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so vote. Second, um, vote no to adopt an, the open space discount. Uh, I need a vote?
I would move to not adopt the open space discount.
Second now.
We have a motion made and seconded to follow again the recommendation by the Barry Board of Assessors and to vote no to, and not adopt an open space discount. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a recommendation from the Barry Board of Selects, um, assessors, uh, to, to vote no to adopt a residential exemption as described in their document, uh, sent to us and explained by Jesse Warren, their representative, not to recommend this adoption. Could I have a motion?
I move to not adopt the residential exemption.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and ex- and, um, seconded to follow the recommendation of the Barry Board of Assessors and vote no to adopt the residential exemption. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a final recommendation from the Barry Board of Selection, which is to vote no to adopt the small commercial exemption as described in their, in their information and also presented by Jesse Warren, their representative.
I would move to not adopt the small commercial exemption.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded not to adopt the small commercial exemption as recommended by the Barry Board of Assessors. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe we have done the basic, you know, duty so that that, now a tax rate can actually be calculated by your board.
Yes, uh, so, uh, that will be submitted, all, all this documentation will be submitted to the state and then, uh, we will be hearing back, hopefully early December, maybe even a little before that, um, whatever tax rate will be. Um, for the purposes of that submission, I do need, um, certain signed paperwork here that I've included, uh, for.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so this was, that's a copy of the, uh, LA five, which is, uh, just, uh, and a assembled, a seven of numbers that was also included in the, the end up that I gave you.
Now, do you, now, yeah, you need our signatures on this particular paper?
Yes.
Okay, do you need all of our signatures?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And that, that is.
We probably need to, a black or a, or a blue pen? Okay.
And that just certifies that you reviewed the information as I presented it. Uh, there was also the certification vote and one for you as well.
Do you have the Allen's?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
Does it have to be black? I think it's blue.
Yeah, I think it's okay, because they checked in blue on this one, so.
Oh, I, I have a blue pen. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have all three signatures on both of these documents. I think we're all set to go, and that?
Thank you very much.
See, thank you for your hard work. I see your, your mid- the midnight oil, you burn it a lot, and, um, we're appreciative of that, and I know it's not easy to get all of these numbers together between you and the accountant and the town administrator. It's a lot of work and we thank all of the people who've worked on this to get this to us in a timely fashion, and I know no matter what the tax rate is set at, it won't be something that anyone applauds, but I thank you for your work to do, get the information so that the tax rate can be set.
Well, thank you. Well, it's, working with a very great and capable team has made that a lot easier, so.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have, I think, a DPW, uh, wage authorization and a hu- a new hire, uh, Mr. Jason.
We can go back to it.
You all set?
Uh, we, we skipped the appointment, but we can double back to that later.
Okay. We have public hearing appointments on op- okay, we, let's go to the appointments, appointments for open space.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Alcohol license renewals I have, open space, your open space list? We have a, open space. Do we have a listing of?
I couldn't fucking go through that, because you said that, that project was done, so there was no.
So we, we created a new, um, charge for it. We, we approved that, what, maybe two months ago?
Okay, so I had the new website?
And, um, yep, so I believe, so make sure that's up there and then.
The only one I had was Robert Kane.
Was Robert Kane. That's the only person I know of who's.
Okay, because that's.
Yeah, that's the only one I'm, I'm aware of.
Okay.
So, so is there, is there intent this evening to approve him?
I think it would make sense to appoint, I mean, it won't be a functional committee until it has a majority of the members, but.
Is that the condition?
Okay.
I mean, he's, you know, been a driving force in, in helping us, you know, reestablish the open space committee and I.
Did you ask to be on it?
Yep.
Okay, so we do have, uh, uh, an individual that we can appoint. Could I have a motion?
I move to appoint Robert Kane to the open space committee.
Second now.
We have a motion to appoint Robert Kane from seven sixty Williamsville Road in Barry to the open space committee. Um, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this committee will become active once it has a majority of members appointed to it, but this is a good first step.
And our thanks to Mr. Kane for taking the initiative to, uh, participate in this important, um, committee. Uh, wage authorization, now we got the wage authorization, Maureen, okay. We have a wage authorization for a new DPW hire. His name is Jason Cole. He will be a truck driver, skilled laborer, and we expect him to start pretty much immediately. I think he's done the paperwork and I think he's finished with the physical and so forth, so I think he's going to be yours very quickly. And we are authorizing him at an hour, hourly salary of, uh, twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents.
I move to approve the wage authorization for Jason Cole as a truck driver, skilled laborer, uh, effective November fifth, at twenty-five thirty-one per hour.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, that is his start date. Did he make the start date? Is he actually functioning in the position? Excellent, excellent. I s- I sign that, Sandy.
Is there a way we can change the, um, procedure on how these guys, uh, well, when they're hired? Like, I was talking to Jean the other day and she said she wasn't even aware of it. It's like after the fact, so I didn't know if we could make sure that the accountant knows ahead of time or, you know, when this actually happens, you know what I mean? Is there a way to do that? Because it seemed to cause some problems a little bit.
Well, I thi- I think what has been sort of a, it's been a very difficult, uh, you know, timeframe, because we're trying to hire so many different people.
Yeah, right.
And as a result, the, um, we have, you know, numerous opportunities for interviews and quite frankly, we're in this kind of situation where we need to, to take very quick action to authorize it. We know the positions that are open, and so when we have an appropriate candidate, we do offer the position. And probably at that point, we could send a name up and say this person will be going through, you must have a process that is usually, usually used, Sandy, and so maybe.
I did prepare it.
Okay.
Uh, maybe just communication.
I did do the Cory and everything, which I did. Tom had set that up ahead of time. I had all that. We were just waiting for the wage authorization.
Yeah, okay, well, we can get the wage authorization to you more quickly, wouldn't you think, Tom?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, because we, we pretty much just do that when we hire the person.
Right, um, I think, kind of worked with Sandy and Tammy to kind of get the, the package electronics, so there was a little bit more screen like.
Yeah.
Yep.
So soon as they get, uh, they get the offer, they accept the offer, I. So soon as they get, uh, they get the offer, they accept the offer, I email them the package, they can fill it out and then I get it up here, as much as the packet I can, I get it up here to, to Sandy to just start her stuff and get some more.
Would Jean be included in the?
Well, first of all, does he get, has he even gotten paid yet? He's, how long has he been working here for?
Week, two.
A week, so he probably doesn't get paid at the moment, which then it goes to actually Janine, then, then it goes to Jake and then the accountant. So maybe we can make sure we give it to Janine, we could give it to the accountant.
And Jean as well?
Already, so surprised.
Just add them to the.
So maybe we can talk with Jake and we'll see if they can make sure and we'll make sure.
Yeah, just run it up last week.
Right.
It's a communication thing, that's all.
Yeah.
'Cause the wage authorization sheet isn't anything that takes a long time to get, right? I mean, we, we know that pretty much when you offer the position and they accept it. So we can probably do, do a little better in getting that up, uh, to people. Um, Sandy, if there's a, you know, or, or Tammy, if there's a recommendation you guys have as to how to streamline that process for us?
So I guess when we give it to Janine, we'll give it to the accountant as well. That'll be what we'll do. When we give it to Janine, we'll also send it over to the accountant.
The wage authorization?
The wage authorization, so then she'll know that this person was hired.
Okay.
Tammy, is that, is this just an email? They added her to the email? Is it, you know what I mean?
We literally just hand the paper, so.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
There's no email.
Okay. I, I thought.
We could send an email.
They have the sign clocked.
Yeah, okay, I just thought somebody was, was left off.
No, no one's left off the email, no.
All right.
So for Janine, when I give it to Janine, whenever she puts it in her system and then she.
Send it to Jake.
She gives it to Jake?
Right, and then subject, yes.
Yeah.
So you're asking me when I give it to Janine, make sure it gets copied to Jean?
I will make sure that she gets it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we've done our wage authorization for the D P W. I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank you, Tom, for the work that you've been doing trying to get us, uh, you know, our people hired and so forth. Uh, I know Tammy, you've spent a lot of time putting stuff on, um, Indeed.
Yes, I do, yes.
And other places in order to kind of get a cadre of folks, you know, to, that we can talk to. I did send you a thing asking you of the person that we interviewed last week, um, was somebody that had your, your interest. I mean, there were only three of us there, I, you know, but, um, he, I think Jay was, Pramant was planning the father to do some, um, ta- conversation with the previous employer.
Uh, yeah, so I did touch base with him today and that individual took a job elsewhere.
Ugh, and I liked that guy.
Who was it, Tom? I can't say.
Yes, it is.
You can't say, but an individual.
No, I mean what position?
A, a truck driver laborer.
Oh.
And, um, I knew as soon as he told me that he was, you know, recent, you know, married and was having a baby, I knew he was a guy who really wanted a job. He needed a job. And he was, you know, he just had, I thought, I'm really sad that we lost him. Do you know where he went?
No.
Oh. Okay, okay. Strike welding iron's harder, yes. Okay, we now have, um, alcohol license renewals, uh, annual license renewals. We have alcohol, we can do that, um, as our liquor license. And we have motor vehicle and vitueller and, so we only have one alcohol license?
So five and a half.
Oh, okay, so you got.
This is less.
Okay.
We'll get them all some point.
Okay.
We'll get them all, they'll, they'll all trickle in at some point.
So fifteen Exchange Street, that's the new Russo, okay? Are they, what are they, what's their name, do you know?
Uh, fifteen Exchange Inc.
Oh, so that's the name.
Doing business as Russo, but that's there.
Okay, so fifteen Exchange Inc., which is right up next to the Red Tomato, that we're indicating approval for that. Wholesome Farmers Market, obvious to us. Barry Post Two Building Association, Inc., Pi Town LLC, and Hartman's Herb Farm. Um, do we have a recommendation or a motion to approve those liquor licenses?
I move to approve the liquor licenses for fifteen Exchange Incorporated, Wholesome Farmers Market, Barry Post Two Building Association Incorporated, Pi Town LLC, and Hartman's Herb Farm.
I'll second all those.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the list provided to us this, at this meeting. Uh, the, uh, annual alcohol license renewal, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy. I'm sure there are others we have to do, but.
I got some more today.
Okay.
I still have to remind you of those.
Okay, great. Then we have, uh, another, uh, one's a motor vehicle. We have class one, that would be looking for Higgins Energy Alternatives, Inc. And class two, White Valley Motors, Inc., and Motor Specialties Company. Could we vote all of the, uh, motor vehicle license renewals? Give a motion?
I move to renew the class one motor vehicle license for Higgins Energy Alternatives Incorporated. And I move, well, I don't, do you want to do them together?
Well, however you'd like to do it. If you want to do just class one, we'll do class one first.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for the approval of the motor vehicle license for class one, that's Higgins Energy Alternative. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving to class two motor vehicle license renewals.
I move to renew the motor vehicle license class two for White Valley Motors Incorporated and Motor Specialties Co.
Incorporated, uh, corp, company.
Second both of those.
We have a motion made and seconded for the class two, um, motor vehicle license renewals for White Valley Motors, Inc., and Motor Specialties Company. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's a vote. Uh, we now have, um, some vitueller's licenses to deal with. We'll go first to the in holder common vitueller license. That'd be represented for the Barry Center for Buddhist Studies and the Jenkins Inn and Restaurant.
I move to renew the in holder common vitueller's license for Barry Center for Buddhist Studies and the Jenkins Inn and Restaurant.
I would second both of those.
We have a motion made and seconded to renew the in holder common vitueller's, uh, license for the Barry Center for Buddhist Studies and the Jenkins Inn Restaurant. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The common vitueller, uh, the licenses requested for renewal from fifteen Exchange Street, Inc., Apple Green, New England, Wholesome Farmers Market, Inc., Post, Barry Post Two Building Associ- Association, Inc., Pi Town LLC, and Hartman's Herb Farm. We have a motion?
I move to renew the common vitueller's licenses for fifteen Exchange Street Incorporated, Apple Green, New England, Wholesome Farmers Market Incorporated, Barry Post Two Building Association Incorporated, Pi Town LLC, and Hartman's Herb Farm.
I'll second all those.
We have a motion made and seconded to renew the common vitueller's, uh, uh, shall we call it, license for those indivi- uh, individual corporations, uh, noted. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, entertainment, that always makes me smile, 'cause it's just, 'cause they have a T V. But anyway, um, we have a motion for, to approve the, uh, license renewal for Pi Town LLC and Hartman's Herb Farm for enter- entertainment vitueller's licenses.
I move to renew the entertainment licenses for Pi Town LLC and Hartman's Herb Farm.
I would second both of those.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the entertainment vitueller's license for Pi Town LLC and Hartman's Herb Farm. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Let's take a vote. And Sandy, I know they'll be dribbling in and you'll be giving us probably a list pretty much, and through March, through March, right?
No, the usual motor vehicle ones are March.
Oh, okay.
Everybody else has to be done by December thirty-first.
Oh, okay, so that's good. Okay, so those are done. Uh, discussion to approve selection of the playground, play- playground, playground consultant, I guess that's Tammy?
Yes, so I have site specifics here, this is the quote, that's the one eighty-nine nine nineteen. I'll just send it to you and you'll see that there's writing, 'cause we can't purchase any equipment until F Y twenty-six. So just pass through and you can all get it.
So at this time we would be selecting them as our consultant for the sake, so the sake of the park grant. And, um, this one, I, from everything I heard, had quite a bit of support from the community.
Yes.
This was the, the company that had the train.
Yep.
Style playground.
Mm-hmm.
That's the, um, design. But I had her put on it that nothing can be ordered until basically F Y twenty-six. And then I can send that over to the park playground.
I know we've been talking about this and working with these people for months, so I know this is sort of just the end of the operation, until probably April?
Until we restart the operation?
Yeah.
July first is when we can still, like, well, we can start excavating.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're gonna be working probably soon as.
Ready, then the parts will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, just per, per the grant, we can't spend any funds until July first.
Okay, but obviously we have some other funds we can spend, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically we are going to, uh, approve the High Plains Park, um, site specific LLC, P O Box Rochester, Mass. Okay, that's the company that we'll be working with. And, uh, the total for this project at least noted in here is one hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
Eighty-nine, I think it was right, one eighty-nine?
I, one, okay, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, nine hundred and nineteen, okay, got it. And we need a motion?
I move to approve site specifics as the playground consultant for the High Plains Park.
Second now.
We have a motion made and, um, seconded to approve the consultant of, uh, site.
Specifics.
Site specifics for the playground at High Plains Park. We have a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's take a unanimous vote. Thank all of you for all of your help and assistance on that. And I know we're not done, because I know, um, because of the, the grant that we, we have.
Yep.
We're gonna be doing a little more, um, a little more than we thought, which is great.
But we, we'll, we'll need more outreach in determining how to best use that grant.
Yeah, and, um, you know, there were some things we were gonna try to maybe do in-house that maybe we won't be doing in-house and we'll be doing, having the site specific, you know, actually doing some of the, um, final handicapped accessible matting. Because that's new stuff, that's not anything that a, a typical person who would be working on, uh, you know, and.
Last thing we want to do is get that wrong.
No, we don't want to get that wrong.
No, and she did send me, which I don't have the memo with me, that there's sawdusting or something like that that you have to put around now.
I know.
So we're gonna have to pay for that, we'll have to get, I have to get close, I'll have to get close.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully within the next week, so.
I mean, there's no question.
That'll fall in the purview of the, the park's grant.
Yeah, yeah.
So the insulation, the mats is not included, I believe, is.
No, it's not.
No, that's not included.
I, I just hope that will be included with the state.
To be ADA accessible.
Yeah, they're not.
I don't think it's something that, you know, we should just say, oh, we can do this, because we don't know how to do this.
Yeah, we're probably gonna want to do the ADA part accessible, because we're, we're already over the mark with site specifics. So there are some things we are gonna have to do on our own.